Okay, welcome back, everybody. Good news, bad news. A lot to take in with this meeting. There was two hours of public comments. I did not listen to all two of those hours.
And if you did, God bless you.
Casey Pratt, I'm sure as hell did. But I don't know, so from what I read and a few that I heard, the first against public comments were very inaccurate in terms of credibility. They were clearly very financially motivated. So that means that some organization that benefits from the A's not going to Howard Terminal kind of sounds like they were maybe paid by those people or other things.
Yeah, so I listened to like the first hour of it. And yeah, it is. It sounded very scripted. I'll tell you straight up now, some people did have some actual points which were, you know, the Port of Oakland brings a lot of revenue for the city. Which I think there's, I don't know how much argument you can make at that point, especially with the Howard Terminal stuff with everything that's come out. Other ports in Oakland, yes, but Howard's terminal is a different story. It and other people are like.
Brody kept saying that he kept on tweeting like this is everything they're saying is so scripted.
Yeah, so it sounded very, very paid off. But it reminded me a lot for those of you watch Parks Rec, whenever they would do the the city council episodes, it sounded a lot like that, except there wasn't a Star Wars Marvel filibuster packed in there.
Hi, yeah, I I went to this park and in front of the water fountain, it said, do not drink this water. So I drink it anyway, and I got sick and I had the runs for two months. It's like, well, wait, so you ignored the sign?
It's me, they sound a lot like a city council member, Gail, which we'll talk about a little bit later. But yeah, it was on the the first forty five minutes was a lot of cringe. But then you can, you started hearing a lot of people who were like who were a part of like the organization of like working at the stadium started calling in. Kind of like the pride of having the A's. There was one guy, I can't remember his name specifically, but he talks about like, yeah, I have a lot of pride that this team is from Oakland and a lot of stuff. And I was really close to calling in, but I feel like I just don't. What am I gonna say? Like, hey, I don't, I've never lived in Oakland.
Yeah, also, I was gonna say like, I don't, I don't think that would, you know, you know, you don't live there, you never have, I don't, I don't know.
Well, my point was going to be, it's like, hey, it's not just what this team means to just the city and the economic impacts it has on the city, but just to the greater East Bay. Think about, you know, how how much it's one, how much inspiration that's kind of inspired for all these kids growing up out there, look about all the whole, you can pull up a list of these legendary baseball players who've all come from the East Bay. Yeah, Troy Tulisk is East Bay.
Uh, he's from Santa Clara, but he's a diehard A's fan.
That's right, yeah. But like, also too, just like how much revenue, if you were to build the stadium, it would bring in from those cities who would be coming in here. And then plus you think about like, yeah, it's just, that's like also like, I don't love this anymore. But go on, or what was gonna be the next? Point, we're just.
Oh, I thought you were going, oh, oh. So yeah, a lot of that sounded very fishy. And then, you know, there was pro for the site, people who came on and everything I read on Twitter, I was not listening on that part, was that it sounded very credible and they made very good points. And they also got very deep into the logistics with it and they kind of recommended ways in which to make it work. At the end of the day, the city chose to, so okay, let me just fill in listeners for people who might not know on the logistics of of how the negotiation has gone. So the city of Oakland asked the A's to submit a term sheet, has all the details, has it was a several hundred page report on all of the the all logistics going into the Howard Terminal site and they deliver it to the city, to the city. And there was some certain details about that term sheet that the city, one of them being that the city pay for $800 million worth of community outreach and.
City or the A's?
Uh, the city, the, the.
Okay.
In in the original term sheet in April, that was turned in.
Oh, yes.
Requested that the that the city pay for $800 million worth of community outreach and and expansion and funding and to help the the surrounding area. That was the biggest like kind of difference between the city and and the and 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 the team. So the city denied that term sheet and they, instead of taking the A's' term sheet and making altercations and adjustments and negotiating those those things in order to come to a mutual agreement, they created their own term sheet and they delivered it to the A's and the A's. And not only do they decide to deliver that specific term sheet at this city council meeting, for and the A, so they decided to do that at the city council meeting. And this was the first time the A's saw a good amount of this language. So they asked Dave Cavell if he accepts the term sheet and what his feelings were. And rightfully so, he said, there's a lot of language here that we had never even discussed. And this is the first time seeing it, so I can't knowledgeably look at this and make a educated decision on whether we can accept it or not. So if I, if my answer has to be today, my answer has to be no, we do not support this term sheet. And then a city representative said more or less that there's no reason for us to be here if they don't accept these terms, blah, 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 blah. But you know, the whole negotiation process has been a mess. I know I skipped around a lot, Julio, so you can fill in the blanks if you want to. But it it's a very odd negotiating tactic from both sides. There's a lot of foul play going on, but at the end of the day, the city did vote in favor of that, of the Howard Terminal site and that term sheet. Where the A's go from here is a long discussion. There's been mixed reports out of the Oakland A's organization. So their initial response is, well, do you remember what his initial response was? The word like specifically for word, word for word?
Not specific word for word, but it's Dave Cavell's tone did change by the end of day. It they initially it was pretty sour in that moment. I think we were both on the Zoom call with the city council members there. And it was also pretty crazy is like they ran out of people for Zoom. So like I had to go and like jump into something else for a minute. And then when I came back, I lost my spot in the call, so I had to like enter in multiple times. But he did have a better taste of it by the end of it. By the end of the day, he's like, yeah, we're still gonna work something out. So I also had kind of an epiphany right now. So I think the reason why, look, we just want to reiterate this again. We're not experts on this. We're not, we didn't go to school. I went to school for communications, Chris went to school film. But I think we both do a good job of communicating to people who just don't have any research at all. And who kind of like outside perspective, because I think we do a pretty good job of kind of giving you this information on a pretty common denominator. So I just want to throw that out there. Now, what the vote means that if, because the final vote was, there was six yays, one abstinent vote, because if I remember right, I can't remember the council member's name, but because of like.
It was the one who, I forgot her name, but it was the one who represents the Howard Terminal area. And she's, she was the one who was like, I don't know why we're even here today. We're wasting our time. Like if they're not wanting to negotiate with us, that I can't remember her name either, but she was the only abstention.
And then there was one name who was Noel Gallo. And we'll, we'll talk about him in a second. He's gonna get his own special segment. But what this, what this, yeah, yes. What this vote means is that like, it's gonna continue the negotiation process. This whole date in the first place was very much a boogeyman tactic. That was said, at least from our perspective, kind of reading from the people who have been doing the research from MLB and from the A's to be like, oh, if you don't get this done, this is it. And ever since then, we've had a lot of extreme foul play from the A side, especially, you know, Dave Cavell going to the Golden Knights game.
He was in Vegas today instead.
He was in Vegas today, he was.
Mayor Schaff had.
He was in the boring company tunnel doing, you know, stupid Elon Musk stuff. But what this means is like, they're gonna continue the negotiations. The biggest thing that's separating the two teams right now is something called the IFD, which is IFD, it's pretty much like how much money you're going to be receiving in tax to like help out, I can't remember the specific terms. But the difference maker at the end of the day or before this vote was $350 million. And it was like, it's at this point where if what Dave Cavell's been saying that the team has put close to 200 to 300 million dollars in their own money for this project alone in terms of like researches, investigations, all that stuff like that, what's an extra 350 million? I don't know. Go on, you had a point.
Well, it's off of that. So when that point, an issue came up to this whole stadium situation, Gavin, Governor Gavin Newsom, not wanting the A's to leave California, had a very quiet vote at the Senate floor and the Assembly floor that would give the city of Oakland additional $328 million, or no, 282 million, no, that number's way off, 282 million dollars of financial assistance to help with that matter. And it passed, so the city kind of has that money set aside for to cover that cost. And though it's not all of it, the county, I mean, the county has committed to cover whatever the remainder costs be to to cover that for the A's. So that was also a big talking point in that city council meeting. Rebecca Kaplan, the city's vice mayor, kept on reiterating that the.
Your Twitter follower, by the way, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Rebecca. I believe it was her that was saying this, kept on reiterating that the A's would not be responsible for that 300 and was it 28 million dollars? Yeah, 320.
350 initially.
350 million dollars that that would be covered, that the the city and the county would be able to to take care of that because of what I just said, the the state money and and the county will be covering the rest of it.
Yeah, exactly. So like, if here's the biggest thing, and this is kind of the talking point I've been having with a lot of people who are trying to like bank the argument for this, for like, oh, the A's are gonna leave.
Yeah.
You go, look, dude, we've never been in this kind of a situation where I don't think we've either been in some intense negotiations. But negotiations are hard. Negotiations take sometimes take a long time and because there's so much back and forth. Because nobody is ever gonna be happy at the end of the day, you just have to find a way to settle. And I think we're at this point where this money is gonna be coming through from the state. Shout out Gavin Newsom for that. It sounds like there's gonna be some sort of money coming from the county. And if John Fisher's cheap ass can't fork up whatever the difference is in it, it just shows you their heart was never in in Oakland. Despite the rooted in Oakland, despite, you know, all this stuff, they did the 510 nights, whatever. It just shows like the end of the day, it was never gonna be there. And there's a couple of things we we will definitely, we gotta talk about this right now before we kind of lose track of it, that Marcus Thompson had a really great piece in The Athletic the other day, where he just kind of talked about, you know, the whole stadium dilemma. And he talked about how right now, the Bay Area is the sixth biggest market in the country. If you just take, let's say you take about six to eight percent of that revenue and give it directly to the Giants, the A's would still be ahead of Portland as well as pretty far ahead of Vegas in that same area. And it makes absolutely no sense when it comes to our property value. What would make more money for you in the long term? Would it be Las Vegas where they're gonna put them that up, a desert plot where Bill Shankman, who's Bill Shankman, I can't remember, who's the guy who's a sports writer for the LA Times?
Bill Plasky?
No, not Plasky, anyways. He's actually been doing a lot of stadium research as well for the A's. And he's like, by the time the A's were to have their first game in Vegas, there's gonna be a hockey team, there's gonna be a WNBA team, there's gonna be a football team. And there's gonna be a pretty good chance that there's gonna be an NBA team there by that point. So you're gonna be the fifth team in that market, trying to take any piece of that chunk of that revenue from any of those teams where it's like the Golden Knights are a cash cow, the Raiders are gonna be a cash cow for a long time. And we'll see.
All you need to do is look at LA and the Chargers and how well that worked out for them.
Yeah.
You just muted yourself, Julio.
And the thing about the, thank you, the thing about the Chargers is their revenue is becoming.
It's all good, we needed some.
Yeah, the revenue from the Chargers, all it's because of they have the name Los Angeles. Why do you think the the Angels changed the name from the Angels to the Los Angeles Angels? Because of that market, that you, if you're just within that market, which I think LA is number two, yeah, they're number two market in the country. Of course, you're gonna make revenue because of just the name and how big of a populace you have there alone. I know Henderson's a growing city and people are starting to become more intrigued about the idea of leaving, going to Las Vegas, but there's even studies have been concocted in the last year and research has been happening where like this myth of like, oh, the great leave of California, it's not true. I know multiple people who've moved, who I've known from out of state, who've moved to California in the, in a goddamn pandemic in the last year. There's so, people are never gonna stop coming to California. So it just doesn't makes, it makes absolute zero sense why you would want to leave that market. There's so much money to be made there, even if you are the second fiddle team in that region. Look at the Angels, the Angels are huge, even though like they have an ass for forever, they're still a huge revenue bringer. It just, it doesn't make sense, but this.
The Chargers, I was more saying it currently hasn't worked out for them because like, let's face it, this city's a Rams city, like no one gives, or a Raider city, no one gives two shits about the Chargers.
Yeah, but it doesn't, it doesn't matter because you're still, you're still putting money in Stan Kroenke's pockets every time you go into those games. And guess what? That seems to be filled, even if it's not with Charger fans, you're still paying us, you're still paying them.
I don't know what that has to do with what I'm saying. But what I'm saying is I don't, I don't, their popularity is not there. And like it, to your point of you being the fifth team in the city, like I don't see it working out for them. I don't think that town is gonna take the team at the well, as well as other places. And also like, we don't know how how well the Chargers have done in SoFi with a full stadium at, we'll see this season.
No, my point that I was trying to make, because we saw this happening when they were playing in Carson at the StubHub Center or whatever it was called.
Yeah.
Was that like, yeah, it was like 20% Charger fans because like NFL fans travel. And like every single game was filled by the opposing teams, like fan base. That's gonna happen here at the stadium. And when SoFi opens up, you really think there's gonna be, like, I'm going to Raider Chargers at the end of the year. That's gonna be all Raider fans, gonna be home game practically. And every like, when like the Eagles come in town, like Buffalo comes to town, like those, those fans are gonna travel. So no matter what, you're gonna fill that stadium. But when you are the fifth team in a region where I guarantee a majority of baseball fans who are in Vegas already have their own team. And you have an 81 game schedule when you are the fifth team and there's so many other entertainment options in Las Vegas, why are you gonna go to a baseball game? Also, it's fucking hot.
Yeah, it is.
Like, I know it's gonna be indoors.
It would probably have to be.
But like, still, like, it's miserable. Did you see the clip the other day of, there was a Garth Brooks concert at Allegiant Stadium? And people looked, there was just like a mob of people just trying to get to the stadium because the parking situation, it gets turned out to be a shit show. And it just looked miserable for people trying to get there. And it just, it just doesn't make sense. But what this vote means.
Hold on, the first thing that my uncles, because I want to touch on your point, the first thing that my uncle texted me yesterday, my uncle Mike, when he asked me about it, he's like, because he didn't want to slip through Twitter, so he asked me like, if I could break it down for him. And my, basically, my response was tune into my podcast tomorrow, we're gonna talk about it. But one of the first things he says is it's a $12 billion project, like that's insane. And I'm like, yeah, I mean, that's just kind of how much it costs in California in prime location. Like this isn't like East Oakland, this is the waterfront property. Pretty, so like, that's, it, yeah. I don't, if you're John Fisher and you're willing to to throw down $12 billion on this project, like what's, what's an additional 300 million? That's what I don't get. Like, I mean, it's, it's chump change to you. And like, I mean, let's be honest, you're not funding this whole thing by yourself. So like, get the fuck out of here, like, who are you kidding, anyway?
Yeah, obviously, at the end of the day, still fuck that guy, but.
In favor, I was more talking about like what you said with Marcus Thompson in terms of like the market and how much money Yeah. that can be made and stuff like that. And it's like, so you're paying $12 million because it's California, but it's, you're gonna get that back easily.
So what does that vote mean at the end of the day? It means the negotiations are still gonna be going. And between the time that, I think it was like the middle of May, end of May, when the news came out that like they're gonna start looking at locations and they forced this date. They've made massive strides to find a midpoint. Now, Dave Cavell is saying he's hoping to get another vote or another conference, like city council meeting like this before their recess, which I believe is gonna be like September.
Yeah.
So we might be a little more concrete on what's gonna happen next. And then plus, we're still waiting for their environmental report to come out, which I don't think we're gonna get till like November, closer to the end of the year. I would say if, I I see this as a win. At the end of the day, I think we, the city of Oakland got what they want. I think that's the most important thing is like, it's Oakland first, I understand. This team means a lot to us and we gotta work with them, but you know, these are, this is a guy who's a billionaire, he has so much money. He can easily find investments from other places if you really needed that money to go through it. I think he's just being completely cheap about this whole situation. And so don't listen to people saying the Portland A's, the Vegas A's, I think we're good right now. It's just like, how hard is this team willing to make this work? Dave Cavell did sound a little more optimistic about it. He, and he's even said multiple times, it's not optimistic about it. And I think we're, we're not there. But we, we, to quote, you know, they keep using baseball analogies throughout this whole process. And it's just the fucking cringiest thing, because sometimes I don't think these people watch baseball.
That shit was hilarious when they ended the meeting with that baseball.
Yeah, also, I, I just gotta say.
We're on the eighth inning, I'm just like, oh.
Yeah, I'm like, I'm like, guys, please shut up. There was some guy that like the rate, though, there was a, there was a community call that happened in the first hour, someone's like, you guys lost the Warriors, you lost the Niners. And everyone's like.
What?
Yeah, but it went from like, we were losing by four, we're losing by two now. So I'm optimistic.
Yeah, okay, so my whole big thing is like, you said, it it feel like, is it, there's potential that the, it feels like the A's are negotiating in bad faith. There are times where it does feel like the city council is negotiating in bad faith. The entire thing about, instead of making adjustments to your term sheet, I'm gonna make my own term sheet and you're gonna have to abide by my rules. It's like, look, is this a dick measuring contest or are you trying to keep this team in Oakland? What the fuck are we doing? I've never heard any negotiation go that way. Dave Stewart came, went on the post.
I was about to bring that up too.
And, and he, Dave Stewart went on the post game, he's been a, since he retired from baseball, he's been a a baseball and sports agent. He owns, he's a partner over of a very successful sports management and an agency company. And he says in his 20 years of of working or 30 years of being working in this business, negotiating deals, being a sports agent, he has never negotiated that way. He has never seen a negotiation go that way. He has never went to an organization, an organization has never offered one of his players a deal. And he goes back with a separate deal on his own. No, he makes adjustments to the term deal that you offered me. And then he brings it back and he negotiates that way. Like, that's not a thing. So like, who's negotiating bad faith here? Is it the A's or is it the city? Is the city just trying to, just, just really like, you know, they've been fucked up, they, I don't know. I mean, they haven't been fucked over, but you know, like, are they, are they trying to strong arm the A's into, into, into doing it this way? Like, they're just like, they're the little brother who got picked on his whole life and he's like, I'm gonna stand up now. Like, it's just, it, it, it doesn't make any sense. It doesn't, don't, don't do that, Julio. It doesn't make any sense, it doesn't make any sense at all. So, so, you know, they need to, they need to really like start like, kind of being more cordial with, with, with this, this whole, this whole thing. Because otherwise, it's just gonna go nowhere. And, and they're gonna go to fucking wherever they're gonna go.
Before you say, I was gonna throw myself in that argument. We're both the little brothers who've been tormented, but besides the point.
Wrong time.
Right now, yeah, no, it's there, look, it's not, it's not perfect. Oakland hasn't been playing, they didn't play nice this past week, absolutely not. I, now, whether what Cavell was saying was a little bit more of a show and he probably did know a little bit, at least some of what to expect, or someone in his staff knew what to expect, we won't know. We don't know, and I don't think we'll ever know because that just seems like the way these are going. But I gotta say, man, they kind of deserve it. They kind of deserve it for how much this franchise and how much Major League Baseball has really kind of torn that to not, not just the city officials, but like us, man, the fans. Like it, like, we talked about it last week when we had Alex and Jason on, man. It's, it's been kind of, it's been hard to watch this team sometimes because that thought's looming in there. And you're seeing fucking Dave Cavell at a Golden Knights game, you see the boring tunnel. And like, and so, so they deserve to be that.
The A's started the foul play, but.
How did that, wait, when did they start it? Oh, the A's, I'm sorry, nevermind, you're going.
The A's started the foul play with the whole going, making trips to Vegas, making these announcements, Rob Manfred talking out of his ass, which his response to the city council hearing, it sounds like he had no idea what was going on.
He doesn't.
I don't know who.
He's too busy hanging out with Travis Scott.
I don't know, I don't know, I did, I don't know who, like, who he has surrounding him, like in terms of like his cabinet. But they're doing a shit job and they should be fired because they do not inform him for anything. I know he doesn't probably run his own, like, he doesn't, like, he didn't write that statement. He probably just like read it and was like, yeah, that sounds good. Like, they're not doing their due diligence. So like, he needs a, he needs a new team around him for sure. But yeah, the A's started with the foul play, but, but this, this whole, like, let's bring our own term sheet and like you can approve and you can sign on to this, like, that seems very foul play as well, like, like, like they're trying to send a message. So like, yeah.
Yeah.
No, the A's, the A's are more at fault, but I, I don't, the city can't get off Scott clean in this. That's the.
No, they, they.
And I think our listeners deserve to know that they have been a little bit manipulative and deceiving as well.
I, I see a lot of like, how do I describe this? At least from hearing some of the conversations that they've had and then just kind of hearing some of the callers that they had, I see a lot of like that, for lack of better words, like Berkeleyism in people still. Of where, like, there was somebody who called him, was like, I'm a neo socialist and I don't think we should be supporting funding by a billionaire. Well, guess what asshole? How do you think all those buildings were built in downtown Oakland? Or all this new, all these new residences that you're probably living in in West Oakland are built by those, and it wasn't John Fisher. But it's all the same people. Yeah, exactly. Oh, you work for, okay, I'm a neo socialist, who do you work for? Pandora.
Yeah.
I work for, who do you work for? Uber, like, no, look, don't, and that's exhausting. I think a lot of, you know, we know a lot of these people, we grew up in that world. I worked for Uber for, for a couple of years and I was living, living in Los Angeles, not like driving, but corporate Uber. So like, look, man, if you're gonna make this work, thoughts are, you're, you're gonna have to, there's gonna be some bad people to deal with.
Yeah.
And if having to fund some extra pockets in order to kind of sustain a legacy that's been a kind of vital part of the community for the last six years is what it takes, then yeah, I'm cool with it.
Do you, uh, do you want to give your rant about Noel Gallo now and then we can, we can?
Yeah, let's wrap this up. Noel, okay, so, yeah.
I feel like, I feel like, uh, you know, listeners, we, we're, we're doing our best, we, I think we gave you a pretty good summary of what, of what's going on. And yeah, just, just like Julio said, it's not over. Um, but we are in the, let's say, third quarter. Let's take a different reference other than the baseball, beginning in the fourth.
Uh, yeah, uh, sure. Uh, but anyways, yeah, optimistic. It, it sounds like things are going in the right direction, so, good thing there. Uh, but also, I want to take this second real quick before we jump to Noel Gallo, or Noel Gallo, whatever you call him. We have to give the biggest of shout outs to Casey Pratt. Casey Pratt, ABC Seven News, he's a sports reporter, he's covered the A's for a long time, but in April.
The A's for a long time.
Yeah, in April, he decided he's pretty much, he's like, look, a lot of people talk about the games and do people play the games, go for it. I'm just gonna take on this stadium situation head on and really just do my research about it. And he's actually done a fantastic job. I think he's done a really good job of kind of, being able to conversate stuff that is really complicated and kind of, uh, mundane and be able to pass around to people like us, who are like, we don't know shit about any of this. And just fantastic job. And I think if the stadium does go through and we're gonna be sitting, we have a Howard Terminal, the, the shovel's on the ground, he should never have to pay for beer in Oakland and the East Bay ever again. I know he lives in Livermore, my brother has seen him before in that area with, hanging out at beer spots. He should never have to pay for another drink ever again. And his family, if, because he's, I think he's been a big proponent of that.
And, and to a couple more people, Marcus Thompson has obviously done an amazing job, um, as well. Uh, Tim Calcomi has done an amazing, Tim Calcomi's been doing this for, has been doing an amazing job with journalism for thirty years though, so it doesn't surprise me, but he's been doing a great job, because, and if you follow him on Twitter, he's really good at also translating the bullshit. He's a lot more aggressive than Casey Pratt is, but, uh, if you guys know Tim Calcomi, he's very aggressive. Um, but, uh, um, he's been doing a great job. Um, and, and also Brody Brazil has been doing a great job on the broadcasting on Twitter, making it simple for people to understand.
And also, our new friend, Alexis Pinoza, Jason Burke, you know, Alex has been putting out a lot of pieces of Rick Anderson blog. Jason's been pumping out pod after pod, talking about a lot of this stuff, so, you know, all of you guys, you know, we're in this together. Like, I, I don't want to reference High School Musical, but you get the point. But anyways, uh, Noel Gallo.
Megapod.
He, never forget, he voted no, because he's like, I think they have the site to build at the Coliseum, and they have the, also own the Raiders training facility in Alameda, where they can use that site too.
I, didn't the Raiders train in, uh, Napa?
Uh, Napa was, uh,
Training camp?
Training camp, but their actual training facility is in Alameda.
Got it.
I've never heard somebody who sounded so confident about how ill-informed they are than this guy is. And one.
For those of you don't know, he represents the East Oakland District, where the Coliseum sits.
So, and what he was.
Also some information they should know.
And when he put his vote in, he had an A's banner behind him, he was wearing a rooted Oakland shirt, and he was very proudly saying, no. Um, and because he is, and his reason for saying no is, um, we have a call, they have a site, they have the Coliseum site, they have the, they own it, or have owned a portion, a portion of it, you can build a lot, which, look, you're not wrong. You're absolutely not wrong. We've all been those parking lots. We've all, you know, that, it, it's a massive area, you could definitely get built in, and I do agree with you. But the thing is, they don't want it. They've been saying for five forever, they don't want that space. Because at the end of the day, it's not gonna be as much of a revenue driver as like everything, like if people put it by a ballpark stadium, and the water, uh, waterfront stadium. And then you're talking about building it at, at the facility where the Raiders' training site was. Have you, dude, that is not a big space at all. What the hell's in Alameda? Only thing I know from Alameda is Faction Brewery. Um, the, there's like a nice target they have there, and that's it. What the hell are you gonna do in Alameda, man? No offense, Alameda.
I will say, they have pretty cool downtown. My friend Cari used to live there and we'd go out around there, it's pretty cool, pretty cool.
But like, besides the point, man. Like, just tell, look, dude, if you just tell us, hey, I'm getting paid by certain longshoremen unions to make me tell this, so I'm just gonna say that's my vote. Because like, we all know it, if you go online and you look up who's big parts of your donors and they've been showing up on Twitter, it is those people who are putting money in your pockets. So, like, just say that, man. You, or you just try and find a better argument besides, they have a lot, because like, it's not gonna happen. We, it makes the most sense, but like, these, that, like, this ownership group are stubborn. And they're not gonna make that happen. So like.
They, they have to compete with the stadium across the bay, like that, let's, let's be honest, that's the reality of the situation. They have to compete with those people, the, the people who are baseball fans but don't, aren't necessarily a fan of this team. So what's the best way to do it? You get a, the stadium village, you make them stay there for a long time, make them spend money in that area to build up that economy. If you do that, the Coliseum, it's gonna cost a lot more money, a lot more money to try and build that there. They have the space, but it's gonna take time, it's gonna take money. And you can't just snap your fingers and build a stadium village. That's not a reality that people live in. Also, it's very dirty, you're gonna have to clean up all of that area around there, clean up the homelessness, clean up the housing like developments that are there. It's just, it's a whole project that you can't do. So, I just want to say this directly at my Uncle Mike, because he's been preaching to me for years, why don't they fucking build it at the Coliseum site? They have that site, they just build it. This is why you don't build it there, because it's gonna cost twice as much money, and it's gonna just be a, twice as long of a project. When you have the stadium village at Jack London Square already for you, you just need to build a stadium there, and it's good to go. That's why you don't build it there.
And the argument to say that Bart, oh, the Bart, Bart Transportation takes you right there, you're right there. Which, again, not, not a bad point. I think a lot of people agree with you with that. How many people still take Bart to go to, or, excuse me, go to Oracle? I mean, how many people still make that, how many people still make that trek? Think about, and, you know, us being Southern California residents, yeah. Angel Stadium, you can take Metro Link and it'll drop you off right there, it's not the most convenient times, but you still can't do it. But like, and people are still, more people are going to Dodger Stadium despite the commuter hell that that stadium is. More people are going to Petco Park, even though, you know, they have their own train system down there. Um, it, it doesn't matter, like, at the end of the day, that stuff is nice to have, that public transportation to get you there. Um, but it's not, it's not the end of the world, is it? And it's like, it, and it's shown, because across the bay, they've made it work. And.
And you don't, you don't, but again, you don't want people to leave that area, you want them to stay there. So you don't want to give them an immediate, easy out. Like, you know, like.
Hell yeah, dude, like Dodger games, yeah, yeah, I gotta walk through that long ass hill, but you bet your sweet ass, I'm gonna go jump to the next place and get some tacos down on Sunset Strip.
Go down to, uh, Shortstop on, uh, uh, in Echo Park.
Yep, go to Shortstop, go hit up some, you know, Dave's Hot Chicken over there. Um, and if, if I'm in, sit downtown San Diego, I have the gas line, it's right there, man. Oracle, even though I, I haven't been to Oracle in some time, but I feel like that, those, what was the place across the street, kind of overrated?
I, I don't know. I usually go to Twenty First Amendment.
See, it's, besides the point. If you build it, they will come. All right, I, I, we should talk about, also, we never talked about the name of this segment, I was pending, we might change this, but rooted in Oakland, two to reboot it.
All right, yeah, we, we should, we should, we should wrap it up. But I just want to say, that tram that's gonna go from Twelfth Street Bart to, uh, the stadium, seems pretty cool. It's gonna go over downtown, anyway.
I like it.
All right, here's the upcoming schedule, folks. This Thursday, a four-game series against the Seattle Mariners. Shaminaya is, uh, gonna be taking on.
Chris Flexen.
Yeah, let's do that, that's the name. Um, and then Frankie Montas is on Friday. Uh, you know, who cares about who the opposing pitcher is?
No, I'm gonna say this, no, hold on, no, no, I'm gonna give these guys a good credit from here, because. Uh, Yusek Kukuchi was the All-Star for the Mariners. Uh, he's been awesome, him and, uh, Otani went to high school together, it's great. Chris Bassett's going against Logan Gilbert, Logan Gilbert is their rookie, he's, is an abs- he's gonna be their next stud pitcher. And then, uh, closing out the series, Swervin Kohlervin, he's going against Marco Gonzalez, who has been a pretty solid pitcher the last few years, he's really fallen off. And I just want to say this, I know a lot of people might not be paying attention to it, because Seattle's been ass for a long time. Uh, Seattle is six games above five hundred and they're three game and a half games behind us. I don't think, realistically, they're gonna cash the A's. Um, but just be aware, don't get frustrated about this series if things go awry, because they, they've got a squad. They got a really good young squad, a few years from now, they're gonna be a major problem.
And then next Tuesday and Wednesday, we're gonna be playing, is Shaminaya and Frankie Montas will be dishing that one out on Tuesday, Wednesday, so it's, they tune.
TBD.
That.
Nando. Because I just, I just like, they're, you ever seen their shirt? It says, it's of the Mandalorian, but they put Fernando Tatis's face on his face.
Uh, that, I have, that's actually pretty, I actually fuck with that shirt, I'm not gonna lie.
The Nandalorian. Anyways, Padres are tight. I'm excited to watch that series.
All right, Julio, who is your player of the week?
Hey, you know what, ready set it, Tom, we're, I already said his name, I'm just keep giving this guy his res, he's been on him all year. Uh, Swervin Kohlervin, he had a fantastic game.
Killed it.
Dude, he, I, I know Jed's been awesome, I think he's.
Toe to toe with Shohei though, bro.
Yeah, but like, I think Kohlervin's probably been like the best acquisition in me in this offseason. He went toe to toe with Sho- with Shohei. Uh, he's gone, he went seven innings, uh, you know, he gave up seven hits, he only walked one. And he, he had three K, so the K numbers weren't super high. Um, but this was a guy that like, it was just kind of like, oh, yeah, they traded for this guy, and you can bring up the tapes from way back when, when I was kind of doing my research on him. Um, and I was like, hey, they might find something out of them. And guess what? The guy has been an excellent number five starter for the team. He, there was a lot of hype about, oh, Shohei, MLB put out a, uh, Instagram or tweet, tweet, it's like a graphic showing like, oh, Shohei, Lord, ERA is blah, 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 blah. Cool, well, guess what? Chris, our Kohlervin, Lord is ERA to three point four, so. Kohlervin, man, Orange County kids, just keep killing the Angels. You love to see it, him and James Kaprillion.
Yeah, you've been, uh, you've been, uh, calling that one for sure, um, and that, he's been a fun, fun guy to watch. It's interesting, because his, um, his, his, uh, rotations per pitches is pretty low to the average, but somehow he finds a way to get it done. He, he must just have insane accuracy and just hitting his spots.
Um, somebody on our, our Twitter account, I can't remember the name of the top ahead, but they're like, they kind of remind him of like a combo of Mark Mulder, Mike Fires, where like, Mike Fires never had the really dominating stuff. Um, and that, that they just, and it's just like the combo lefty kind of thing that's going on. So, I hope he keeps it up, especially as a number five guy, dude, you love to see it. So, Kohlervin, keep going, man.
So, uh, I want to give a, uh, this isn't my pick, but I want to give a shout out to James Kaprillion and, uh, Jason.
Look at here.
Who called that one, he's been killing it, his last start. Six innings, seven strikeouts, dominated the Angels. That was a fun one to watch as well. Uh, but mine is gonna be, you said it, but you know, whatever. Jed Lowry, Jed Lowry is hitting three forty-six in the last seven games. Boy, seven earned, or seven, uh, runs batted in, three homers, guy's been killing it, he's only struck out twice. So, keep it up, Jed. Um, last fifteen games, three forty-five, fun, fun fact.
Oh my god!
I mean, it's mostly the last seven games that I brought him up, because he, last fifteen, he had eight strikeouts, but, but only two strikeouts, man, that's what's, that's what's, that's what's really crushing his, his, um, his, um, batting average. Um, oh, he hasn't really walked that much, but nine hits, so, yeah. He's been great, and he needs to keep it up, because we need him, we need him at that number two spot in the order, so good job, Jed. All right. Last week, Julio, um, uh, our boy Steven Scotty, who we just shit it on this podcast. He was your essential tailgate tool of the week, so.
So, I just want to say before we, we can move to your guy, the reason I set him up, it was like, this is the do or die week for him. If he puts on a good week, it kind of can show that like, all right, we can rely on him to kind of be our everyday guy. And he did it, he went over six, he struck out four times, so, yeah, uh, an outfielder's coming sooner or later.
It is. Mine is Frankie Montas, crushed it. He only had one start, but it was pretty nice, seven strikeouts. Um, he did get the loss because the bullpen failed. Well, no, actually, the bullpen didn't fail him, he had no run support. Um, uh, six innings, six hits, only two earned runs. Great job, Frankie. Um, keep it up, you start two games this coming week. Um, I don't want to see the classic shitty, um, third, shitty third game, um, shit the bed, um, let's keep it going, bro.
That's my second half MVP, so I hope so too. Um, and then for this week, for me, uh, I'm going with Mark Hannah. He's been back in the lineup for, at this point, he's gonna be back in the, for a week now. Um, he's, he's showing a little bit of that thunder, what kind of makes him so good with this team this last week, just being patient at the plate, getting that pitch count up, kind of letting the rest of the guys in front of him or behind him to kind of see what's gonna be coming up next. Uh, but with the really tough series, two tough series with Seattle and San Diego coming up, um, I can see him kind of really go into the next level, so Mark Hannah, you're my guy this week.
Uh, mine's gonna be, uh, very similar for similar reasons, Ramon Laureano, um, because of that, because we're going up against the Padres, we need the run support. So, Mark's back, so that means that he goes back to one. Uh, has, have they been moving, have they been moving everybody down? Is that how they've been doing it? I haven't been noticing, I've been done a terrible job.
I know, so, um, at, at least the, the last couple of games, uh, Elvis was hitting two.
He's been playing well, so I.
Yeah, but then Ramon was really kind of, he beat up Angels these last couple of days, like he usually does.
Home run, yeah.
And then he hit the, the double, I think it was like a two, three run double yesterday, so, I'd imagine he's gonna move back up, you know how Boma likes it, once you get those guys.
Yeah, so Mark one, Ramon two, Lowry three, Olson four, then you move.
Even Jed's been hitting four though, which is awesome.
Rather have Jed hit four than, than Olson. I want Olson to get more at bats.
Yeah, and I think Jed, Jed seems like a better situational hitter. I don't, I don't see.
It's a better baserunner too.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah, just keep that going. I think that's really smart of Boma, to keep that going.
All right, cool. That'll do for our pod, it was a long one, but, um, it was important, so.
Long bit of porn, yes. Um, just make sure, give us a follow on Twitter, at the Town Tailgate, we're so close to five hundred followers. I don't, I don't think we're gonna do anything special, let's make sure to keep those followers going. If you're not following us, liking us, subscribing us on our YouTube page, as well as our podcast, please do so. Chris is actually doing a lot of really cool stuff for YouTube, he's breaking down its segments, so if you don't feel like listening to us ramble for an hour and a half, and just want to hear us specifically talk about the, the ballpark project for twenty minutes, cool, he'll have it set up for you.
And, and all of our episodes are timestamped now too, so if, if, uh, if you only want to hear stadium talk in the dates, in the, uh, description, will be exactly when we start that. Uh, if you only want to watch the big three this week, you can watch, uh, um, a clip, or the twenty minutes or thirty minutes, whatever we did on the big three on our YouTube channel. I'm making, I'm making it easy on you, me, easier on you folks, because, um, we want to keep you guys around. Uh, and tune in every week and subscribe. Uh, and subscribe to Around the Diamond, because we're part of their podcast network and they are cool.
The guy just went to, so, yeah, he was on a, uh, we were like, oh, they haven't posted stuff, the guy was in Miami, was on vacation.
He went to, he went to a game, right?
He went to Marlins game, which.
That's cool, I guess.
I, I, I wanted to, the giant dolphin statue, it's, it's in the, it's outside the stadium now, but.
David Sampson, he built a monstrosity, but it's fine. Uh, we'll see you next week, folks. Last but not least, Julio.
Let's go, Oakland.
Keyword there is Oakland.